Hi, and welcome to the Board Wrap-Up Show for the month of May 2016. That's right, as we record our show with Dr. Pennington today, we are just days away from the end of the 2016 calendar school year and look forward to next school year as well. But, Dr. Pennington, it's hard to believe another school year has pretty much come and gone, hasn't it?
It's really amazing. You know, it's funny, you're so busy during the year and all of a sudden, it's March, and you're preparing for state assessments and those kinds of things, and then all of a sudden, it's the first of May, and then you are, you know, then where we are today, where we basically have two weeks of school left, and it just really does go by so fast.
The month of May brings several things, good things. There's a lot of good things about May. First of all, you honored some retirees at your May Board meeting, and nobody's closer to those people than you and your staff, and I know you're happy to see them retire, but you're sad to see them go.
Well, we lost, you know, we lost a lot of years of experience, you know, walked out of our, haven't walked out yet, but are going to be leaving our district. And, you know, it's an interesting time for people. They're happy, but they, you know, they're also, they already know that they're going to miss, they're going to miss the students. I mean, that's the, that's the first thing when you talk to people about retirement, they miss the students, and that's part of their decision-making process is, you know, when you've been involved in the life of kids as much as these people have for as long as they have, that's a difficult thing to walk away from. And then they miss the people that they work with. I mean, I think it's hard for individuals who don't work in a school building to really understand how close teachers get to each other. I mean, they truly do experience, I mean, if you spend your career in a particular school site, you experience all of life together. The birth of your children, the death of parents, the divorces, remarriages, the marriage of your children, because while, to an extent, teachers are isolated in that when they go into that classroom every day, they're in that classroom with those students for a 55-minute time period or a 30, whatever, whatever a class schedule may be at the elementary level. You know, you're with a group of kids for six and a half hours a day, except for the 30 minutes that you get for lunch, and maybe a 15-minute break here or there. So, in a lot of ways, they're isolated, but it's amazing, you know, how much, how close you can get to somebody in a five-minute passing period that's in the person in the room next to you, or as you work on committees together, or as you're in the teacher's lounge together having lunch, or the time you spend before, at breakfast and at the end of the day. You know, some of the, some of my, what I would certainly be my closest friends are still those people that I began my teaching career with over 36 years ago, and, you know, those, and especially those people who were my, who I shared a conference period with. You know, so it really is amazing when you think about that, and that's hard to walk away from, but they're all excited about the next phase of life. We, you know, we had a, we had one support employee who, her and her husband have a really, actually have a little bait shop, you know, and she's going to be working in the bait shop from now on. It was interesting to listen to all of them talk about, you know, what's your biggest, you know, what's the first thing you're going to do? And I would say that, that especially for a majority of the women that were there last night, they're going to clean their closets out, which I thought was kind of interesting because, you know, you think about that, that's just something you don't have time to do when you're working every day. So, you know, they're looking at the next phase. Several of the people who retired are going to come back and work for us either as substitute teachers or come back and work part-time next year, so we're excited about that. It especially helps us in these difficult times to have people come back and work for us half-time next year. So, you know, happy for them, great for them. It was not a very big group of retirees. I think we had 16 certified staff members and maybe another 15 to 20 support staff. So, you know, typically, you know, we'll have 40 or 50 people a year who retire, so it was a small group and, but we wish the best for them and, you know, unfortunately, a lot of those people who retired were not going to fill their position. We're not necessarily cutting their position, we're just not going to fill it next year. You know, there's a difference between eliminating a position and not filling a position. When you eliminate a position, you're saying that program, that that's teaching slot in your district, you're doing away with for the foreseeable future. When you reduce a position, it just means that you can't fill it at this time, and sometimes that you can't fill it because maybe you're going to offer a different program. Sometimes you can't fill it because you can't find a teacher. Unfortunately, in this case, we're not filling those positions because of the economic conditions in the state of Oklahoma. But that, we hope, will get better someday and that we can rehire those, refill those positions and, and get back to getting our class sizes at more of a manageable level and offering students more academic and elective class offerings.
We're going to talk about that on our program today, but the other great thing about May is graduation. What about this graduating class, Dr. Pennington?
You know, I'm always amazed at the quality, I mean, I guess I shouldn't say that. We consistently have a great group of kids, and when you look at this senior class and you look at their academic accomplishments, you look at what they've done athletically, but then you look at the kind of things they've been involved with in the community. The one thing that I think that, that sometimes people, we don't give students enough credit for is the things they do outside in the community and the voluntary hours they put in, either as the churches they attend, or sometimes it's just the organizations they work with in town, the way they find ways to put back into the community. You know, this is, Class of 2016 is a great group of kids, and, and we're going to, you know, you get a chance to celebrate that milestone. It is just one of many steps left in their future, but, you know, graduating from high school is a big, is a, is a big step, and it, it's that, you know, it opens the door to whatever is for them in the future, whether it's going to go to college, whether it's going to go to career tech. We always have a large number of our students who make a commitment to the military and go and serve their country. So, this is just another, in the 12 years I've been here, I think it's always been pretty consistent that, that our, that our kids have plans, they know what they want to do, they're prepared, and now, really, you know, it, it, you know, you think about, as students go through school, we kind of really shepherd them and kind of, you know, we, we offer them some freedom, but we still kind of keep our hands around them. But, you know, from this point on, those hands are moving further and further away as they walk out into adulthood, and I, you know, obviously, some students are more ready for that than others, but I think for the most part, this class has been equipped. The interesting thing now is to see what they do with the opportunities that they have. And, you know, as school, as teachers and administrators, as community members, and really as parents, you know, we've got them to this point, and obviously, they'll still have some more guidance from, from, from family, but really, from this point on, it really is up to them. You know, they get to start a new chapter, and if they maybe aren't exactly where they want to be right now, they can, they still have an opportunity to, to go do something different and kind of change the narrative about their life. There are some students that, right now, they have a great narrative and they have a great story, but if they don't do anything from this point on, then this, then their whole life becomes what I did in high school. I don't think any of us want that. We always want this to be a baseline, and then for these steps into the future, for them to continue to grow and expand and take advantage of the opportunities they're presented with.
Graduation, by the way, is at Solon Stadium on May 20th, and certainly, public invited with all the parents as well. The May Board meeting also brought about some decisions about Washington Elementary School, which has been Woodlands and Trout the last two years, and I still am the old-timer. I know it is as Washington Elementary, but some good news, we're going to find another use for that facility.
You know, one of the most consistent questions I've had, I can't even, it seems like we closed Washington just yesterday, but it's really been longer than that. You know, when we first redrew our elementary boundaries that we had to do because of the loss of enrollment we experienced after the, after the merger of Conoco and Phillips and the relocation of employees throughout the country, the question was, what are you going to do with Washington? Because, you know, we put a new roof on it, and we, we put in new air conditionings, did some things to keep the building up. We always, you know, we never wanted to abandon the building, but we weren't sure exactly what we were going to do. We put their alternative students there for three years, and then when we made a change in how the alternative program operated, we, we then had the building shut down for a year before we used it to house students from, from First Woodlands and then Trout as we renovated those buildings. But now, after we complete Trout on June 1st, we don't have any need to shut a building down and move students to Washington for a year while we go in and renovate their facility. So, we have thought on and off over the years what we, what we would do at that facility, and then finally, the Board voted last night to make Washington a pre-K center for the district. So, what that means is, is that when we open for the 16, 17 school year, all of our four-year-olds will be housed at Washington. Now, we did that for a couple of reasons. One reason is we wanted to find a use for the building. We know that when buildings set empty, that they deteriorate, and that is a facility that is in too good of condition, and it's, and it's centrally located, such a great location, that we wanted to use that building for an academic purpose. The other thing is that last summer, when we had money and we were making serious efforts to reduce class sizes at our elementary sites by hiring additional staff, one of the things that became apparent very quickly is that if we could have hired enough teachers to reduce our class sizes, we really didn't have space in any of our buildings, that we, you know, our four-year-old program had grown. Our four-year-old program is larger today than it was back in 2003 and 2004 when the merger happened, which is kind of interesting how that all happened. But our class, we, so we didn't have space. Now, as we renovated, as we, as we renovated Woodlands and Trout, we were able to build some additional classrooms on those, on those sites. But, we didn't have additional classrooms at Liberty, we're going to lose a classroom at Lincoln in its renovation, we're, we're full at Roosevelt, and we started to use the old annexed part of Roosevelt for the last several years, and we don't have any additional classroom space at Garfield. So, so the question began, okay, so, you know, when we get to a point, either that we can find teachers and hire them, or if we get funding improves enough that we can add additional classrooms, how are we going to do this? We don't want to go back and put portable buildings at our sites. And if our, you know, viewers remember that, you know, if you, if you would have gone to Trout, Woodlands, Liberty, Washington, back in the late 90s, early 2000s, we had portable buildings at all those sites. And one of the purposes of all the, all the construction we've done the last few years is to get rid of those portable buildings. So, so we started to think about, okay, so how do we create space at those sites? Well, we have an empty building, we don't, we don't, we haven't had a growth of enrollment that would cause us to open that building again, and when you think about opening a school, and you think about staffing that school, if you're going to, you know, when you do, when you open a school, then there are, it's not just a matter of opening the building and teachers, but you've got counselors, you've got, you've got librarians, you've got PE teachers, you've got art teachers, you have all these other programs that have to be staffed in that building. But you, but we don't do those things for four-year-olds. We don't have PE for four-year-olds, we don't do art for four-year-olds, we don't do music for four-year-olds, we don't do a librarian for four-year-olds. And our four-year-old day actually ends an hour earlier, not quite an hour, about 45 minutes earlier than the rest of the school day. So, it, we, we thought the, that the best option then was to reopen Washington as a four-year-old center, and so that's, and so that's what we've done. The other thing that, the reason we did that is what happens for a lot of our parents of four-year-olds is they end up, at the end of the day, going over to whatever site their child's in school at, and they pick those students up 45 minutes earlier, then they sit at those sites waiting for school to get out. And sometimes, it's not been uncommon over the years for, sometimes, especially at the beginning of the school, for our parents, you know, they're there, they've got their youngest child, they don't want to wait for school to be out, and we have a lot of, we just think we have lots of kids who are being pulled out of school early throughout the year because it's convenient. They have got the youngest child, they've got 45 minutes in the school day left, they need to go do something, and so they want to pull that other child out. So, we think by, by having the four-year-old center, parents can go pick that child up, and really, by the time they get that child picked up and get over to the other side, it's really about time for school to be out. So, you know, we're going to, we're going to do this, it may not work out the way that we think it is, but, but we think it's going to be a good thing. Another thing we can do, as we think about that long-term, you know, there are different needs for four-year-olds, especially when you think about a playground and how that playground, the kind of equipment should be on that playground, the kind of opportunities students should have. And so, we'll be able, as we go forward, to renovate that playground and do some things there to make it a unique experience for our four-year-olds throughout the district. So, we think it's a good plan. We, we are looking forward to opening that. We've got some things we have to do. We're going to put classrooms and, or put, put restrooms in every classroom. That project will happen this summer. We need to go, you know, if you go to Washington right now, you'll see that the fence does not go all the way around the site, we're going to do that. We're going to purchase some playground equipment and put over there. We won't be exactly where we want to be with the playground and all those kinds of things for kids this first year, but we'll get there over time. And then it allows us also to, when we think about buying stuff, equipment, and materials for those young people, it allows us, we think, to get more of a bang for our buck because, you know, those teachers can share, can share materials and supplies. The other thing it'll do for us is, we, we've not been as consistent as we want to be in our four-year-old with exactly what the four-year-old academic program is. You know, the reason we have a four-year-old program in Oklahoma is we believe it's a great opportunity, especially for low-income children, to get a head start. And so, we really want to ramp up what we do academically in our four-year-old program so that we can really focus on closing those gaps, and, and we've had some sites where, where the, we kind of operated our four-year-old program not necessarily like maybe you would at daycare, but it hasn't been maybe as academic challenge that we'd like it to be, and, and so we want to correct all that, and we think that, that this is a way that we can make that happen. Barbara Davis, who has been the principal at, at East Middle School, but started our Team Mom program several years ago, also in addition to having a elementary principal certification, is also a counselor. So, so we're removing Barbara, she's going to be, she's going to start that program for us, you know, she's had, she's one of the few principals we have that has taken something from scratch and built it, which is what she did with Team Moms, and we think that gives her, she knows how to do that, and so we're looking forward to having Barbara in that position. And then Tammy Flashpolder, who's been assistant principal at West, is going to be the new principal at East. In the overall grand scheme of things, we're not adding any administrative staff. We've eliminated an assistant principal position at the high school so that our total number of building-level administrators in the district will remain the same even with this move. So, that's where we are.
Ironic that the state legislature concludes about the same time. You'll be watching students walk across the stage for graduation, and as we kind of wrap things up, I know that you have some information about where we stand on monies, funding for the next school year, just for the summer that you want to pass down.
Yeah, what I would tell to, what I said to our patrons is, what I can tell them is, we still don't know anything, and, and that is extremely frustrating. I mean, we started, when the session started, back in February, the legislature knew they had a $1.3 billion shortfall they had to deal with. And I understand that they have some very difficult decisions to make, and they've had to work through that process, but we have a deadline of June 1st that we have to let staff know what we're going to do for next year. And so, because of that, and because we haven't added information, we've been working very hard, quietly behind the scenes, to make the cuts, the reduction in staff that we know we need to make in order to meet what we think is a, it's not the worst-case scenario, but what we think the middle, the kind of the middle scenario is going to be as far as what budget cuts we need to make for us to operate next year. So, as a result of that, we have, we're not refilling, I think it's 27 certified positions and about 10 support positions across the district. We've been able to do that with retirements, with resignations from individuals who are going, either not going to stay in the teaching profession, maybe they're going to go teach somewhere else next year, and then with a small number of positions where we did not want to retain the services of certain individuals. And so, all told, everybody that wanted to stay in Ponca City and everyone that we wanted to stay as an employee of our district, they all have jobs for next year, and, and so we feel pretty good about that. Obviously, what you don't want to do is be in a situation where you have to do a reduction in force, is where you go through a formal process of reducing positions, and you have people who, you know, this is their home, this is where they want to stay and work, they're people that you want to continue to employ, but you can't employ them anymore because of the financial situation. You know, sometimes you, you find yourself in these kind of financial conditions, and it's just because of circumstances within your community. We kind of went through this early in my tenure here, where because of, we had so many jobs that were relocated out of Ponca City as Conoco Phillips restructured, that we lost students. And so, we had to make those reductions because we didn't have the same number of students we lost. Really, when you look at the difference in our enrollment from when the merger happened in November of 2001 to where we are today, we're about 450 less kids in the Ponca City Public Schools than we were at that time. And so, when you lose that, those, that number of students, you have to reduce your staff, and those are kind of locally, those are local issues. What's frustrating about what we're seeing right now, and what we saw in 2008, 2009, we're not making reductions because we have less students. We're making reductions because of the economic conditions. The 2008, 2009 conditions were a national recession, and, you know, the national economy was in trouble, and so we had less revenue to deal with. Right now, in Oklahoma, we've got this mixed bag. We've got, some of the reductions we're making are because of the drop of the price of oil and natural gas, and so we would be making those reductions anyway. But a lot of this is self-inflicted. It's because of decisions that the legislature has made, a series of decisions, really over the last six, seven years, where they refused to recognize the need of the state for new revenue. They used one-time money to fill gadget, budget gaps when they, so they, so which made that, so you take one-time money this year and use it to make your budget, and then your economy's not any better, so then you use one, you find another source of one-time money. So, we've been, you know, we've kind of been taken from Peter to pay Paul for the last several years when oil was $100 a barrel. At the same time, we continued to cut taxes. And so, we had a group in Oklahoma City that was so intent on tax reduction that they did not look at, didn't really pay any attention to the economics of the, of the state economy, and, and so they just, you know, they, 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 you know, bet on this promise that if we cut taxes enough somehow, it's going to spur revenue growth, and it didn't happen. Now, I don't know what would have happened if oil would have stayed at $100 a barrel. Maybe if, if we'd have stayed at $100 a barrel oil, they could have made all these, you know, these calculated decisions, and it would have paid off in a robust economy that would have grown enough to replace the tax cuts that they made. Because you've got to remember, when you listen to these discussions about tax cuts, what they never say is that we think the state of Oklahoma can operate on less revenue. They just believe that the revenue's going to come from another source, that if we cut income taxes, that we'll have enough growth in, in jobs, that more people will be working, those people will make more money, so they'll pay more in income tax than we lost in the tax cut. So, it's, it's, you know, while part of it is, there are some people in government who are, who run for office, and they want to reduce the size of government. If you go back and look at what our elected leaders said, they never said they were going to reduce the size of government. We always want government to be more efficient. What they said is, we can cut income taxes, and somehow, that's going to miraculously grow revenue in other areas. It was a gamble, and it has not worked in Oklahoma so far. I personally don't think it will ever work, and it's hard, you know, sometimes I just wonder how an economic theory, what President Reagan called supply-side economics, that has never worked, still has so much traction among certain elected officials, not in Oklahoma, but across the country. You see the same thing in Kansas. You know, I mean, they've eliminated a whole bunch of taxes with the idea that if we do this, it's going to grow the labor force, and more people are going to come into, into our state because there will be jobs for them, so we're going to grow, and we're going to grow our economy, and it, and it, the best I can tell so far, it's just, you know, it's just smoke, because it sure doesn't do anything to grow the local economy.
What do you do this summer if the legislature doesn't make deadlines, doesn't meet deadlines, and doesn't give you the information you need to know?
Well, we have to have a balanced budget in Oklahoma, so they have to make decisions. Now, they could come back in a special session. You know, I, I'm not, would not surprise me if the House and Senate and Governor, when we get to the end of the day and, the last Friday in May, that they just can't agree. And so, they adjourn, because they have to adjourn on the last Friday in May, and then they adjourn and come back in a special session, which, by the way, costs the state more money because you have to pay for that special session. Legislators are paid, you know, they have a salary, but they also get a per diem, so they get paid a daily rate. There's some other things they get when they're in session, so they'll, so they'll, so they'll get a per diem for those days. And so, so that could be, we've done, we've had that before where the legislature had to come back in a special session to do the budget. That would not surprise me. What scares me about this budget is I'm afraid that there's going to be some, some things that the legislature's going to do. For example, they're going to make a decision that, that we're going to have $100 million that's going to go to the healthcare authority, but it's going to be based on the passage of a cigarette tax in November. So, they're going to put that in the budget even though the tax is going to be a vote of the people at a later date. And so, if that doesn't pass, now this state agent, now the state revenue is down, that money's not there, so now we come back in January, and now we've got a revenue failure, and now we're taking cuts again next year. I think there are going to be, you can call it revenue enhancement, I call it tax increases in this, in this budget. I think there's, I hope that there is a cigarette tax increase, and I, and I hope that for a couple of reasons. One, the healthcare authority needs money to operate, and so if you can put $100 million into the healthcare authority from cigarette taxes, then that frees up $100 million to go to other sources. then that frees up $100 million to go to other sources. I also think that it, that it would discourage young people from smoking. And we still have way too many people under the age of 18 who smoke cigarettes in this state. And so anything we can do to discourage that, we need to do that. I think there will be a gas tax in this proposal. And I think that gas tax will be on some type of a sliding scale. So if the price of gasoline is $4 a gallon, then you won't pay the additional gas tax. If it's at $2 a gallon, it may be a nickel or it may be a dime that you'll pay. You know, my preference would be is we just raise the gas tax. We haven't had a gasoline tax increase and I think it's been 25 years. And that's forced us to pay for road and bridge repairs out of the general fund in the state of Oklahoma. We never should have done that. We all, I think all Oklahomans, I would say that we've got to have quality roads and bridges. That's understandable. We have to pay for it. And the way we've always paid until about 2008, for road and bridge repair and construction has been through gasoline taxes. And, and so it may not, it may be uncomfortable. It may have meant that we spent $4.15 a gallon for gas, other than $4. But you know what I, excuse me, what I noticed at the end of the day is after gas went, you know, from $2 a gallon to $4 a gallon, and we all screamed and hollered about it. But you know, once it got there, we still bought gas. And, and so, you know, we, again, to me, that's the fair, the people that are driving on the roads in our state pay for the support of those roads. And so I, I think we should do that. I'm afraid that's also going to be a vote of the people thing and, and you never know what's going to happen. Just because, again, it's so, it's easier to defeat something than it is to pass it. You know, it's easier to run ads and say, oh no, your taxes are going to go up on gasoline and your taxes are going to go up on cigarettes without thinking about the big picture. And the reality is, is Oklahomans, we have to pay for the services that we want. And because the, the other side of this is, if we don't do these kinds of things, then, you know, you're going to have the schools that, that right now we're all making plans to have next year, which is 27 kids in an algebra class and 28 kids in a first-grade classroom. You're looking at nursing homes being closed. You're looking at, at young, at, at children who are born into poverty, you know, not having the healthcare they need or the things they need to, to, to have a quality of life. And, and again, it's easy to, it's, it's easy to think, well, if that's, those people that don't have enough money to raise their child shouldn't be having kids. Well, it just doesn't work that way. And if we don't, we know that poor nutrition, not having adequate healthcare, that all those things affect a child's ability to be successful in school. And we also know at the end of this, that a child's success in school goes a long way to determining what kind of citizen and how productive they're going to be in the long term. So we have to step up and we have to take care of the children in this state and we have to take care of the sick and elderly in this state. And that's really, we're not doing anything extra. You know, we're just taking care of the kids and the sick and elderly and it's going to take more revenue to do that.
We appreciate your time, Dr. Pennington, and we'll have Dr. Pennington back for the June board meeting as well. For Chris Adams behind the camera, for Dr. Pennington, I'm Phil Turner.